Yeah, this is one of the things that we do.
Join me as the clerk. I've heard it here, we get to do the line of the United States of America. And then we do a republic with your hands.
Be seated, please. Uh, we have one, uh, change tonight in, uh, the organizational flow. It was brought to my attention and I agree, uh, the resolution, organizational resolution. We'd like to move that to after organizing the committees. Okay?
All right, would we need a motion to move?
Yeah, we do.
Go ahead, Wayne.
Well, we've got to be sworn in before we can make a motion, I believe.
Hey. There was all need to. There are all you, what are you doing? Uh, we're gonna have swearing in ceremony, just gonna make you apply the official. So we've had a little delay in that. But we also swear in all the returning, uh, council members also. When I say state your name, naturally know your name. And then when we state your position, you're awarded one position, whatever. Okay? So if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I will.
To stop and swear.
I'll be swearing.
To affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I have a constitutional oath of supporting the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of state your position.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of all those council members.
Upon. Upon which I am about to end.
Upon which I am about to end.
The term starts immediately and it ends September thirty first, twenty twenty six. Thank you, your honor.
This time I'd like to make a motion that we adjust the amended, amend the agenda and move the set council meeting rules and procedures to the end of the meeting.
Second. Can we, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, let's go down to the organizational, uh, committees. So this is your call tonight. As you know, we do this every year. And we identify who will chair the committee and who will sit on the committees with them. We, uh, I think we have seven committees. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, Wayne, but, uh.
And, and Mr. Mayor.
Then we have eight council members.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, all the council members have a copy of the twenty twenty four standing committees. And then a blank copy of the twenty twenty five standing committees, and that way they can compare, uh, notes back and forth.
Okay. Excellent, so. Wayne?
All right, I will take it over from here until we get this quite have done in the organization of the committees for the Harrison City Council. Our first committee that we're gonna discuss about is Community, Environment, Service and Welfare. This is a committee that Reed Petty has been chairman of for the last year. The areas of emphasis is general planning, housing, cemetery, parks. And last year, the members assigned were Jeremy Ragland, Mary Jean Craggar, Larry Phillips, myself and Joel Williams. Uh, but Reed Petty was chairman last year, uh, do we know if he wants to continue in this position?
By what? Yeah.
My understanding is that he had expressed interest, and this is talking to the administration of moving to public works at one time or another.
I haven't heard from him.
But I wouldn't know that other than a general discussion among the administration a couple of times.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and leave Reed as chairman of this committee. At this time, I would like to have, are we going to stay with four or can we have more than four committee members?
Nancy? Or, uh, is there a reason why you might want more than four?
Uh, the one reason I've, I've always wanted more than four members in any committee is to, you have the opportunity to break a tie with five.
How about five?
And, uh, we could go five and, uh, see if that works out.
I like five.
Okay.
That's what we had last year. Okay.
All right, that's five and that will be five, including Reed Petty, who's chairman of the committee then. Uh, my question now to the council members, uh, goes, who would like to be involved in this committee? Larry, you were on it last year, do you wanna stay on this one?
On which one?
On the.
Oh, yes.
Community and environment, okay, one of them will be Larry. Joel, you were on it, do you wanna stay on it?
Yes.
You were on it, Wayne?
I was on it and I will stay on it, so we need one more, uh, hopefully to volunteer to be on this committee.
Good.
Sure. Oh, Josh will, Josh will be in it, I was gonna, I was gonna ask Lynn to, uh, since she replaced Mary Jean, I thought she might replace her on this committee. But Josh has already chosen to do that. All right, so it'd be Reed Petty, Joel Williams, myself, Larry Phillips and Josh Earl. Uh, our next one is Finance Committee and Mitch Magnus, are you willing to stay as chairman of this committee?
Mitch?
Yeah, well, well. Yes.
Okay, Mitch Magnus, Mitch Magnus will continue to be chairman. And this is one that we had all eight members of the council on that committee. And if it's the wishes of the council, we will continue with that this year.
You know, it's, it's been standard for about eight years now, so I don't see any reason to change it other than if we were to have a committee assignment, but I'm sure that enough members could make it so that we could have a call.
All righty, then we will continue to do that with all eight council positions representing Finance Committee. Next one is Internal Affairs. Area emphasis on this is personnel, facilities, technology, policies and appeals. Larry Phillips has been chairman, do you wish to continue here?
Well, I would like to move to public safety if that's, if we can find somebody else to do.
Okay. Internal Affairs, uh, we need someone that can be a chairman. And the members assigned last Mary Jean Craggar, Mitch Magnus, Liz Darden and Reed Petty. Uh, one of you new council members, do you wanna jump in here and take over the chairmanship of this one?
I'll do Internal Affairs.
Okay, Glenn, thank you. Okay, Glenn will be chairman. Uh, I'm gonna leave Reed Petty on this committee because he does show quite a bit of interest in this. Mitch Magnus, do you wanna stay on it?
I'd like to move to, uh, one of the others.
All right.
Change, I wanna be on, uh, Resources and Policy is in the past, of course Finance, and I don't care what other one, but I want.
Okay. Uh, Charlie, do you feel like you could be a part of this one?
Yes.
Okay.
And Wayne, I don't mind staying on the committee, I just didn't want to share the one.
Then we will put, we'll put Larry Phillips also back on the committee. And so we got Larry Phillips. Uh. Reed Petty, Mitch Magnus. Glenn will be chairman and Charlie will be on it. Anybody else wanna be on this committee? If not, then we will, uh, select that as committee, uh, later. Public Safety, this is one of Mary Jean, uh, Cragger was on and chair of, very involved. This is your police, civil defense, fire, rescue and animal control area. And Larry, you said you want to be on this one?
Yes.
And you want, you want to be the chairman, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm in agreement with that myself, okay? Uh, I'm gonna leave Reed Petty on it, Joel, do you wanna stay on it?
Yes.
And I do wanna stay on this one too, so. Uh, anybody else wants to jump in on this committee real quick?
How many have you got?
Uh, one, two, three, four?
I'll take it.
Okay, Mitch Magnus will be on that one also.
Uh, excuse me, no.
Yes.
Uh, I have, uh, Larry Phillips as the chair of that committee, Reed Petty, you and Mitch Magnus.
Joel Williams, Joel Williams. Okay. And next one will be Public Works and Transportation, Jeremy Ragland was chairman of this one. Areas of emphasis on this is water, sewer, streets, solid weight, code enforcement, health concerns, planning and zoning. Members last year on it was Reed Petty, Joel Williams, Liz Darden and myself. Uh, Jeremy is no longer here, who wants to be the chairman of this one?
I would nominate Charlie Pierce.
Okay, Charlie Pierce has been nominated. Do we have any other nominations for chairman of this committee? Charlie Pierce, are you willing to accept the chairman of this committee?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. Okay, uh, Joel Williams, do you wanna remain on this one?
Yes.
I'm gonna leave Reed Petty on it and I will be on it, I'd like to have one more on it here.
I'll be on that.
Okay, Glenn? Thank you, ma'am. The next committee will be Resource and Policy.
Make a motion, we, uh, elect you as chair.
Yeah.
And I will take it. Unless somebody else wants to challenge us, then. I've been in only a couple of years, so.
You're.
Uh, Jeremy Ragland was on it, Mitch was on it, Liz was on it, Reed was on it. Uh. Glenn, do you wanna get, get on this one?
Sure.
Okay, Glenn? Uh, Josh, do you, would you like to be on this one? This is one where we do all the ordinances, resolution stuff like this.
Sure.
Okay, uh, Mitch, do you wanna stay on this one?
Yes.
And I'm gonna leave Reed Petty on it also. Did you get all those names?
Yes, I have. Glenn, Josh, Mitch and Reed would use the chair.
Okay, you got it correct. Okay, Parks and Rec, Liz Darden was chair, area of emphasis, city parks, recreational facilities, trails, recreational activities, uh.
I nominate Josh Earl as chair.
I agree.
Yeah.
Uh, Josh, will you accept that position?
Yes.
Okay, do we have anybody else that would be interested in that position? If not, then we will, uh, put Josh in there for approval. Okay, Mitch Magnus was on it, do you wanna stay?
Well, I'm already on three.
Okay.
I was gonna limit it, I'm about to be on it, but I don't wanna go to the fourth one.
Hey, uh, Larry, do you wanna be on it?
Yes, sir.
Larry Phillips wants to be on it.
Good.
Uh. I'm on it and I will stay on Parks because I'm interested in Parks in more ways than one on this, so. Reed Petty, I think we've got him on one, two. Three. Already, so I'm gonna leave Reed on there for, uh, no problem with that. So. I'd like to have one more. Joel Williams wants to be on this one.
No.
Okay. Mayor, that is the last committee I have and, uh, if our clerk has it all wrote down, I'd like for him to go over it. And refresh us on who we put on each and then I'd recommend a vote on approving those standing committees for two thousand twenty five.
Okay, the Community, Environment, Services and Welfare is chaired by Reed Petty. Members assigned are Larry Phillips, Joel Williams, Wayne Coe and Josh Earl. Uh, Mitch Magnus is chair of the Finance Committee and all eight council positions are assigned. Uh, the Internal Affairs Committee will be chaired by Glenn with Reed, Charlie, Larry and Mitch on that committee. The Public Safety Committee Chairman is Larry Phillips. And we have Reed, Wayne, Mitch and Joel. The Public Works and Transportation Committee Chair is Charlie with Joel, Reed, Wayne and Glenn as members. Resources and Policy Chairman is Wayne as the chair. Then Glenn, Josh, Mitch and Reed as members assigned. The Parks and Recreation Chair will be Josh with Larry, Wayne, Reed and Joel as members assigned. Does that meet what you have, Mr. Coe?
That is correct, and at this time, I'd like to ask anybody on the members, there's that has not been asked to be a part of one of these committees that would be interested in being on another committee that they're not named to right now. Mayor, if there's not, then I will turn this back over to you and you will have your two thousand twenty five standing committees recommendation.
How about a motion to approve the committee assignments?
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you all for taking that. Uh, Wayne, we're gonna send this back to you, the organizational resolution. I think we agreed to move that down after.
Mr. Mayor, we have the appointments from council liaisons for planning.
Do you, when were we moving the organizational?
To the end of it.
In the very end?
After.
Okay, we'll go on to the appointments then, thank you, Mitch. Uh, we've got several appointments to make. And I'm happy to elaborate on most of the, uh, people and, uh, or little as, or as much as possible. The Planning Commission is first. And folks, you know, people, uh, serving on the Planning Commission, uh, you know, that's quite a job. You remember all the things we've been through the last year, so we really, really appreciate those people. We have two new ones tonight that we want to, uh, recommend for nomination. And the first one is David O'Neil. I think most of you might know David, I think he's from here, been, been here for a long time, FedEx. Passed, still in the trucking business, a big Boy Scout guy. I think everybody that knows David, uh, thinks David is a great guy. Uh, so, do I have a motion to nominate David?
I'm looking at motion, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion on David? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, motion passes. Second guy we have for that, you all know a little bit, a little shaky now and then, that's Jeff Pratt. And Jeff is in the audience tonight and we were happy to bring Jeff back in to city government. I, I know he's been really bothered by not being here every week. I think that goes back twenty five years at least, so, uh, thank you for, uh, putting your name out there, Jeff. So, motion to, uh, approve Jeff.
Don't move.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
No discussion, okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Didn't ask for a post.
All in favor? Thank you, Jeff. Okay. Uh, Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, this is a committee we put together when we moved from commissioned, uh, to city operated. And it's been a great committee, uh, they really are engaged. Uh, naturally Chuck heads that up, but everybody on there, actually Jeff is on there. And I'm probably missing somebody here, uh, that's, uh, that's where Josh will end up, yeah. So, but we have three, uh, of those members that wanna continue. First one is Scott Tennyson, do I have a motion to approve Scott?
Don't move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the second is Carrie Neighbors. So moved.
Seven.
Okay? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the third is Jeff Pratt. Jeff handles the volleyball segment. Uh, motion?
Make a motion to approve it?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I, I wish I could have arranged that.
Now, do we, do we need to vote, Josh is the council liaison? Or is that?
I don't have that down on my list.
That is one of them though.
Yeah, well, as the Parks and Rec Chair, is he a member of the?
Yeah, there you go. There you go.
Okay, there you go, just making sure.
That makes sense. Um, so, we have, uh, what did I do, Scott, uh, Parks and, we did Carrie and we did, uh, Jeff. So now we're at the CATPC liaisons and I think, uh, Matt has two, um, that you had recommended. Uh, first one is Charlie. And, um, need a motion to approve Charlie?
Don't move.
Second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I believe Glenn or you the other? Wayne is the other, sorry, Glenn, sorry, no, no, I, it's, no, no, it's Wayne.
Yeah.
Glenn is coming up, okay. Uh, it's Wayne, so.
I can motion to approve one, Wayne.
Okay. Uh, second?
Second.
Uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, congrats, Wayne, you're back. You were there once before, I remember. So, but what, Glenn, uh, we have a Entertainment District, uh, board member needed. And I think it's just one needed now, who's that replacement?
Jeremy.
Oh, that's right, okay. And, uh, the recommendation is Glenn Hoffman. So, need a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed, no. Uh, and we have a mayor pro temp. And actually, Wayne, you, uh, kinda took over a few times, appreciate that, you do a great job.
That we established Wayne as our mayor pro temp, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes, that's all I have, am I missing any appointment, um? You need to do that.
Showing me something? Oh, perpetual care?
Uh, we're presently the chair of that, right?
Yeah, he did.
Yes, it falls under Reed, but I'll be happy to. Oh, I see. Okay, uh, we've got, let's have discussion there. Uh, now, the fall is under Reed's committee, is that an automatic for the committee chair? Because Larry said he did have to continue.
Mary Jean was chair of a different committee last year, so it doesn't fall.
Okay.
Under that.
Okay, so I think Larry wants it. Uh, Larry should have it, what he is.
So move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. How about that? I think we're down to, we're back to the organizational resolution. I'm gonna let Wayne handle this, folks, but every year, we take a look at our organizational process.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You also have the mayor pro temp.
We did.
We did.
Oh, yeah, you did. Um, so, uh, we look at that, we learn and we wanna improve. So, uh, if there's anything in the entire process that we wanna change, we talk about it, the administration does. But it's all your decision. And, um, you've got some recommendations that have been put together. I think the main one is, we've talked about going from a committee and a council meeting to two council meetings. You know, our thought was, it just allows us to take care of business. And these committees are allowed to meet on their own anytime they want. And if that's what they would prefer to do on their own, that's fine too. Uh, we can set that up and help you. But not that we have to go with the two council meetings, it's just a thought on our part. If you wanna do something different, uh, we're open to that, back to you, Wayne.
Uh, uh, as he said, this is a rules and procedures deal that we put together start of every year. That guides us through what we're supposed to be doing throughout the year. And the city council is charged of setting the rules for the proceedings of the city council, finds the following rules. Uh, should be followed in order to promote efficient, consistent and fair city council meetings. And then we've got the list of rules, uh, that pertain to that, following that. This is resolution number thirteen fourteen. And I'd make a motion at this time.
What, wait?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
There's one, one public comment from Dan Lancaster.
Okay.
I'm sure. Come on up, Dan.
Welcome new members to the council. My name is Dan Lancaster, I'm a forty one year resident of Boone, Patty. We have a lot to cover tonight, so I will get right to the point. As American citizens, we are part of the most unique and blessed system the world has ever seen. The spring power is vested in the people and the supreme law is the Constitution of the United States, which was noted earlier. Fourteenth Amendment to the Constitution, clarify the basic rights are universal, that no state, county, city. Or other governing body can supersede any right given in the Constitution. As you deliberate, the rules and procedures given to you, as I understand it by the executive branch of the city of Harrison. Be sure you understand your right and responsibility to question and alter any item that you or those we represent. You represent may have concerns about. You are the check and balance of the city administration and when exercised, that makes both branches of local government better. I will now exercise my right to voice my concern. In Rule and Procedure Point fourteen, under both A and B. It asks that those addressing the council state their name and address of residence. My concern is the request to state address of residence. In this day and age, providing an address while engaging in potentially controversial subjects can be an invitation for the nefarious to cause mischief. I'm not questioning intent, but recent history shows that providing an address can be dangerous. For example, residential addresses, addresses provided publicly resulted in illegal intimidations at justices' homes and death threats for members of the Supreme Court of the United States. An extreme example. Um, but happens all the time. I'm curious, I am curious of the intent of this request for saving residential address. And I encourage the council to ask the administration, why do we need their address of residence? An acceptable alternative, I would suggest, would be to state county of residence, as I voluntarily do anyway. An acceptable alternative, I would suggest, would be to state county of residence, as I voluntarily do anyway. This gives the council sufficient information and doesn't contribute to intimidation, intended or not. One more very important point, deliberation by the City Council is the only way. The people you represent have to observe your intentions. When resolutions or ordinances are passed. The executive branch, as they deliberate this, deliberated this seven-page resolution, are observed by no one publicly. It is a responsibility of the council. To diligently deliberate what has been suggested to you by, to you by the execution of the branch. It is your vote which validates this resolution. Be sure it states what you and your constituents want it to state. You may also want to question the limited time designated for this important task. The people are counting on you. Thanks.
All right, Dan, thank you.
At this time, Mayor, I would like to make a motion, uh, for this resolution. To be presented to the full council, uh. Because we do want informal discussion on it, and we cannot discuss it until there's a motion on the floor in a second. So at this time, I'd make a motion that we. Place this resolution, uh, in the rule.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I think Wayne is, uh, is stating that we wanna move this on to our next council meeting. And, uh, yes, Nancy?
That motion that was stated to move it to the next council?
Uh, the council.
I just think he moved it into discussion.
Yeah, maybe in the discussion.
Okay. Move it into discussion. Well, let's discuss. I think, uh, by the way, Dan, I don't think, uh, did they give Dan a new packet? I think that address thing had been changed. There, there were a couple of changes. So, I have a motion and a second. To discuss it in full council. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Okay, now it's open for discussion.
Chair, I address the amendment.
Yes, you can.
To the council meeting, um, Administration Mayor's office had identified some changes to be made. And I believe you have a copy of some of those. Some of the amendments I'm going over are results of the committee action also that you took earlier. Right. Makes a change to this organizational structure as well. So first would be on item number six A. As you can see, it provides that, um, committees shall have four council members, but no more than five typically. I have. Suggested that we remove the sentence that says. Every committee shall typically have four council members, but no more than five council members. Remove that entirely, replace it with. Committees shall have four council members, but no more than five members, except the finance committee shall include all council members. I would offer that's consistent with the intent stated by council earlier. Another amendment. Would be section fourteen. As you will note, paragraph A. In this version does not add for an address. Paragraph B previously did ask for an address, but has now been modified to reflect. Last sentence, individuals will state their name and identify if they are city residents prior to offering their comments. Paragraph C. Needs to be modified with the last sentence being stricken. And replaced with, individuals will state their name and identify if they are city residents prior to offering their comments. That's the recommendation from the Administration as I understand it. Is that right, Mayor?
Yes. You have one other change, I believe.
I ask you, everybody, the Administration Department heads, and are there any other changes that need?
This in regard to discussion part of vote?
Yes, thank you very much. That would be paragraph ten. You would note a change from the version you were handed to nine. That reflects, middle of the paragraph, beginning with the sentence, the goal is respectful conduct of business in an equitable order. Informal discussion can occur on an agenda item after opportunity has been made for citizen comments on the item. That's requested amendment. As I understand, the purpose of the request is because that many times is pro forma, the way that we do it, but is outside the rules of procedure. This will allow us to have informal discussion without the necessity of a motion. The fundamental recommendation of the Administration.
So, for me, the only item really to be addressed is whether or not we continue to have committee meetings or two council meetings per month.
Was that the only change? Was there another change we might have come up with on that?
Other changes are addressed by the amendments that we, that we've addressed, which was the structuring of the number of committee members in particular.
So, what I find is generally people don't understand the, the citizenry, um, doesn't understand the purpose of the. Uh, the committee.
Committee meeting, sure.
Because we're simply not voting to take action because we're not bound by that vote until we get to an actual, called council meeting. Usually, committee meetings are used to work out some of the information before. But I see both pros and cons to, to commit, uh, council meetings a month. First of all, council meetings may be shorter because we may have already dealt with items that we might not need to deal with later. But it also may result in establishing issues for which we've not had enough discussion yet.
And it could. I would expect it to.
I would hope it would, actually.
Absolutely.
Because I'm never gonna vote on anything unless I'm made aware of it in.
Sure, and the community. They want to let the community have, have ample input.
So, I'm actually kind of good either way, although. As I've thought about it, I kind of lean toward more the two council meetings, as long as we're not forcing things and voting on them quickly. Unless we do table things.
We can do.
Because one of the issues that is, have occurred in council me, in committee meetings in the past is. We were needing to vote on something and we had to call a special meetings. Uh, remember two instances for Wade, where we had to have special meetings because the timeframe didn't work out. Whereas if we just go ahead and had a regular call council meeting, we could handle that.
This will also allow discussion. On a agenda item by the full council rather than just committee.
Right.
You know, sometimes we get a little more, but you kind of restricted it to that committee.
Well, and I foresee, th- this is me, just thinking out loud here, I foresee committee meetings occurring either just before a council meeting, sometimes.
True.
Or after a council meeting, as long as it's been.
Yeah.
The press, right, yeah, the press has been made aware.
Yeah.
In case a committee needs to discuss something, and you've got them there at that time.
Yeah. Yeah.
I would ask other council members for their thoughts.
I would agree with you, Mitch. My option was the special meeting, if this would eliminate us having a call outside special meeting, so, yeah, I think it would help.
I don't think that, uh, anytime we've had a special call meeting, you can only discuss what's on the agenda, so that's gonna continue regardless.
Right.
The one thing I've seen about, uh, combining it into two council meetings.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I've only been here a couple of years on this council, so I've seen a little bit.
Uh-huh.
But anyway. We have in the past had problems being able to get all of the council members that's on a committee, be it four, or five, or six, or whatever. Uh, to be able, if we want to have a special meeting, come here on Tuesday night, meet with us at six o'clock. We tend to run into a little bit of trouble because some of our council members may not be able to meet on that Tuesday night. Whereas if we are always scheduled to have committee meetings on a Thursday night, like we've done for several years now. Then we all know that we've got to be here for committee meetings on that particular night. Uh. Granted, there's some times that a committee needs to meet. And in the past, we have had to call meetings at twelve o'clock midday to take care of something that comes up on the council meeting that hadn't been discussed or anything. But, and also, when we're calling our committee meetings. Uh, I don't foresee this problem here in the City Hall. But sometimes if we can't meet till six o'clock at night, six thirty at night. It may create a problem for the city having someone here to open the door for us at that particular time unless we pre-schedule pretty early. Uh, and that's just some thoughts I want you to, uh, think about also. But as far as myself, I like committee meetings. I like us as a council being able to sit down and discuss. Everything that's gonna be presented to the council as a committee. Uh, because sometimes if I say something in a committee meeting. It may bring an idea from one of the other committee members that they hadn't thought about, and then we can really do a good discussion. I don't want the committee members to feel pushed in a council meeting or pre-council meeting. That they've got to hurry up and get through with this. I don't want to see that happen. Uh, but I have no problem with the two, uh, council meetings per month. Uh, as long as we don't forget the purpose of our committees.
Sure. Thank you.
Let me answer that. I think that if we just don't have a motion, the item's automatically tabled, correct?
Under Roberts Rule, I think that's correct.
That would happen.
You're not strictly bound by Roberts Rule.
I understand, but generally in our past procedure, if we just didn't have a motion, so we could have general discussion. As we would normally have in a committee, a committee meeting, and then just not follow through with a, a motion and a vote.
True.
It actually gives us a little bit of more flexibility. In, in my mind. It's almost like we're, we're going ahead and having the council, the committee meeting. We're just not voting on it at that time. And that's the only, the other benefit, like I say, for me, is being able to take care of things that come up from time to time. That require.
We have the ability to vote on it. We don't necessarily have to, like you said.
That's right.
So it can go either way. This was not my idea. I think our brainchild over there kind of came up with it, but I liked it when I saw it.
It also provides opportunity for council to issue directives. If someone's proposed a resolution or ordinance.
Yeah.
You can ask the opponent, can you provide us with more information on this, this, or this? Before we consider it. So it would allow you to, by simple vote, issue a directive to, um, in the CFO, for instance, can you provide us with this report so that we can? Fill out any.
Uh, again, as I went through it initially. As I do with most decisions on council, uh, pros and cons on each side and work down it.
Uh-huh.
And initially, I was in favor of staying where we were, but the more I wrote the, uh, the pros to it. I kind of felt the other way, so I've kind of.
That's kind of where I came.
Right, I was sixty forty, uh, against that portion, and I'm sixty forty for it.
Naturally, I talk to department heads every day. I think all the department heads like that idea.
Uh, department reports, I assume that we wouldn't get them every council meeting, probably the last one?
Yeah, fourth, third.
Yeah.
Second, third, and even.
Okay.
If we find that this does not work for us, if we adopt this. Then with it being a resolution, we can adopt at any point to change.
That's correct. You can make an amendment to your procedure, but not to the. It's in paragraph, section sixteen, nineteen, okay. See, someone's age, all right. You can by vote handle the process and issue a modification.
Would that make you our city paralegal now?
Uh. He is.
Okay.
We call Wade, and then we call him.
I would point out another modification that may not have been noticed because it's not substantive in that section number twelve. That is a fundamental change to the common for a business with more in line with the Roberts Rule of Order. And in a way, we have some other reports, practice, just wanna make sure you're aware of.
Well, move this along and make a motion that we approve Resolution thirteen fourteen.
Second.
And more, is that a consideration of the amendments, if so?
I'm sorry, you're correct. With the noted amendments as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that takes effect, uh, in two weeks, I guess. Then you'll see it more next month.
Yeah, next month.
Yeah, oh, yeah, next Thursday.
Next Thursday or week from Thursday?
A week from Thursday.
Next week.
Yeah. Okay, let me see, where are we? I think we're down at the bottom. Uh, citizen comments, James, anybody?
No.
Well, I'll be darned. I'll be darned. Okay. Uh, I, I don't have anything. I noticed, uh, Jeff Nelson is with us. I don't know if I introduced him last time. He's our new President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. Jeff will be with us in two, uh, well, a week from Thursday. To present, uh, his quarterly report and, uh, ask for a check. So that's how, that's how Bob did it, so. Good. Uh, yes, ma'am.
I, once I can announce, remind council that you do have your statement of financial interest that's due before January third of March, please be sure to get it to Clark. Plenty of times in advance. It is due from all council.
Okay, Clark. You know, and I wanted to mention, we have. The past three city clerks in the room tonight together. I mean, it goes, you know, James, Jeff, we go back thirty years, I think. You know, that guy. He was back when they did it with pad and paper. And now, you know, everything is Zoom. So, uh, that is cool, and we had three great ones, and James has been, continues to be a real good one that. Understands, uh, Arkansas code, James, pretty good?
Oh.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Uh, motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you all.
Let's go home.